So it's ten after seven, we're gonna call the meeting to order. I just wanna thank everyone for their patience as we worked out some of the technical glitches that are always bound to occur with these things. This is our first online Zoom meeting as a council elected since October, so we're still figuring it all out. So welcome, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin by standing for Oh Canada. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is a roll call of councillors. So Dawn, if you could.
Councillor Sean Sampson.
Present.
Deputy Warden Michael Dignan.
Present.
Councillor Melanie Sampson. Warden Amanda Mumbercat. Councillor Brent Sampson.
Present.
All right, thanks, everyone. So the next item is any items added to the agenda? I do have a few, but I'll ask for councillors initially if you have any items. We'd be looking for unanimous consent. And because we're not as visual, I'll just get you to indicate your agreement verbally if there is an item introduced. Are there any items?
Yeah, for me, Warden, I just wanted to add just an extension of a good luck, good luck and well wishes for an upcoming season coming up pretty soon, so.
Pardon me, councillor Sampson?
Yeah, I just wanna extend some good luck and well wishes for some group of people that are going to work pretty soon.
Okay, great.
Please, yeah.
Agreed.
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 Yeah, agreed.
Thank you. Are there any other items from councillors? Okay, so the items that I am requesting be added to the agenda are, there are several, so my apologies for that. But the first would be just a mention of straight area Chamber of Commerce nominations. The next would be Richmond Cheer Athletics, congratulations. The next is really, or actually, maybe we should do these one at a time, just in case there's disagreement on one. So the first one then would just be a mention of the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce Business nominations. Could I get agreement to add that?
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, thank you, everyone. And could I get agreement on the Richmond Cheer Athletics, congratulations? Thank you. The next one is discussion on COVID testing sites in Richmond County, if councillors agree.
Yep.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Okay, and the last one is closing or opening municipal buildings to the public, given the rise in COVID numbers. We could have a discussion on that.
Yes, agreed.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So it looks like we're ready to move forward. Could I have a motion to approve that the agenda has amended with those items added?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
I'll second that.
Question.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everyone. So we do have minutes to review from our last March 22nd, 2021 regular council meeting. Most minutes have been circulated in advance, and so could I get a motion from councillors to approve those minutes, please?
Make that motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, deputy warden. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Thanks a lot. So next, we're gonna jump into question periods. So as people may recall, we did decide to add the second question period to our agenda. This question period is restricted to items on the agenda. We did have to change the number to call, because when we moved to Zoom, I meant we were not in council chambers. So, sorry, this is restricted to items on the committee of the whole agenda. I'm not sure if I made that clear. So it is a 10-minute maximum, and I'm not sure if anyone has questions. They were to be, the instruction was to send to Yvonne as the host. And I'm not seeing any. So I'll just give it a minute. Okay, so it looks like there are no questions related to the items on the committee of the whole report. So we'll proceed to the next item on the agenda, which is the committee reports, and I'll ask deputy warden Dignan to read the report for us. Thank you.
Committee of the whole report for the month of April 2021. The committee discussed the code of conduct for elected officials. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and that the code of conduct for elected municipal officials in Richmond County be reviewed by staff and in consultation with the solicitor to ensure that it aligns with the new legislative changes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Could I have a second around that?
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone.
The committee discussed the accessible, the committee discussed the accessible accessibility committee. I move the council accept the recommendation of the committee of the whole and then Warden Mumbercat and Deputy Warden Dignan be appointed as members of the Richmond County Accessibility Committee.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
This concludes the committee of the whole report for the month of April 2021, and I move its adoption.
Okay, so could I have a second around the motion to approve the committee of the whole report, please?
I can, ma'am.
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you so much. All right, so next on our agenda is a motion to adopt. So that is related to adopting the Richmond County Asset Management Policy in order to formalize the municipality's commitment to long-term sustainability of our infrastructure. This policy provides counsel, guidance to counsel and staff on identifying priorities, managing risk, and meeting its service delivery goals. So we'd be looking for a motion to adopt that policy, which was reviewed by law, created by law policy.
To adopt the asset management policy?
Thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thanks, councillor Sean Sampson. So is there any further discussion on that item? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, the next item is a second reading approval. It's to amend bylaw number 29, capital cost of sewer construction in order to clarify the responsibilities of the municipality and private property owner as it relates to sewer backups and maintenance of building sewer service connections. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, councillor Sean Sampson. Any further discussion on that item?
Question.
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, everyone. Okay, and the next item on our agenda is notice to be given, and this is to adopt bylaw number 66, Private Ways, to clarify the authority as set out in section 29A of the Private Ways Act from the province of Nova Scotia, RSNS 1989, C358, amended in 2011. So we would be looking for a motion to give that notice at this point.
I move that the notice be given.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, deputy warden. So any further discussion on that item?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so next item on our agenda is the CAO regarding Eastern District Plan and Commission Intermunicipal Services Agreement. So Dawn, if you'd like to speak to that?
Yeah, so some time ago, we, we made a motion to accept a new structure for the EDPC. And it's come to my attention through John, and as you can see in that letter, where there appears to be a little bit of housekeeping that we need to do, and it appears we have to create a motion to rescind the original July 1st, 2018 intermunicipal agreement. And then, I guess, we'll replace it with the agreement effective July 1st, 2021, as presented by the EDPC. It's just, it's just a formality. It doesn't change the new agreement. I think the new addition is permanent, and it's just, it's just that we need to rescind the original agreement that had them in for a temporary period of time, three years. It was a three-year temporary agreement. So we would need a motion to rescind the July 1st, 2018 intermunicipal service agreement.
Okay, thanks, Dawn, for the update. Sorry, go ahead.
Is there any action required on the last motion that we made, which was to accept the new agreement?
My, to my knowledge, that agreement's been accepted, and so I think we're good there, councillor Sampson. I think this is more or less to take care of a piece of old, an old resolution that had been made. So could I have a motion then from council to rescind the July 1st, 2018 intermunicipal services agreement and replace it with the signed agreement effective July 1st, 2021?
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. So Dawn, back to you for Richmond compost pricing, please.
So included in the package was a briefing note by the municipal engineer regarding the Richmond compost pricing for 2021. These were changes that council had agreed to during recent budget deliberations. So we would require a motion to accept those rates and make them effective, I believe, June 1st.
That's right. So councillors have the briefing note in their package, and it does, it reflects the discussions that are budget as well. So it's proposing that the residential commercial, commercial customer rate is $40 per tonne for compost with a minimum $5 charge, a loading fee of $10 flat fee, tandem truckload screened of $275 loading fee approximately eight tonnes. That proposed pricing reflects an increase of $10 per tonne and $75 per tandem truckload screen compost. So could I have a motion to approve that new pricing strategy?
I'll make the motion to approve the new pricing strategy for the Richmond compost.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on that item?
If I might add, can we just, can we make that effective for certain data? I did mention June 1st, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the same date we're looking at to do with the tipping fees?
Yes.
June 1st was the one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
It makes sense to do it at the same time.
Yes, yeah. Sure, certainly, we can make that effective June 1st. I think that was our, that was our intent. And, okay, so any further discussion? Oh, thank you. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Um, the next item, sorry, go ahead, Dawn.
So again, the solid waste management facility tipping fees were also discussed, and there were some changes made. As these are changes to the rules related to the bylaw, they require a motion of council as well. I can go through the the new rates, if you like.
Dawn, maybe if you just wanna give the, like, the Kohl's Notes version, just the brief, just for the benefit of the public, the increase for each one?
The increase isn't showing on the briefing note. It just shows the new, the new amounts. I can go through those rather quickly, if you like, or you can, you can yourself, if you, if you'd like.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, construction and demolition, C and D unsorted is $90 a tonne. C and D, construction and demolition sorted is $50 a tonne. Uncontaminated compostable organics are $30 a tonne. That's for industrial, commercial, and institutional. It's no charge for residential. Contaminated compostable organics is $80 a tonne. General and paper recyclables are $100 a tonne. Residual garbage is $100 a tonne. Mixed noncompliant residual waste is $170 a tonne. Leaf and yard waste is no charge. Metals and white goods are no charge. Household hazardous wastes are no charge. And that's all of them.
Okay, okay, thank you. So could I have a motion to approve those tipping fees as outlined?
I'll make a motion to approve those.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion on those items?
Question.
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda, I have a few items to run through. This first one is really related to an item that had first been brought up in our January meeting. So this is the 2021 census population, census of population. And so we brought this up in January when we first had the notice, but we deferred it to April just so it would be more timely, because the census is scheduled for May 2021. I just wanted to, you know, I think the background that provided before was that having worked in the field of economic and community development for over a couple of decades, I know how critical is, it is for communities to have access to information that provides a clear picture of our socio and economic realities. Statistics like those collected through the census will help form the foundation upon which community groups, government, and businesses can build cases for support for projects that have a positive impact on our residency and for policy that addresses our most pressing issues. So the next census, as I mentioned, will take place in May 2021. Statistics Canada has requested our support in encouraging our residents to complete the census, and they've suggested a resolution as follows. Be it resolved that the municipality of the county of Richmond supports the 2021 census and encourages all residents to complete their census questionnaire online at www.census.gc.ca. Accurate and complete census data support programs and services that benefit our community. So that was the draft resolution provided by Census Canada or Statistics Canada. Is there any discussion on that item? I wanted to just hand it to the councillors for that. Comments?
I just had a comment. The literature also discusses the fact that there would be a fair number of people that are being hired as well for these positions. And so I actually was contacted by a constituent in my area just saying that they are having some trying folks who are bilingual to fill those positions. So I, to tell you how bilingual you need to be, I don't know, there is a proficiency test that needs to be passed. But I guess I wanted to put that out to the general public in this forum to say if this is something that you might be interested in, that there are job opportunities available. And I'm suspecting if you, if you go to the census.gc.ca website, there'd be some instructions there to apply for work.
Fantastic flag, councillor Sampson. Thank you. Great suggestion. Are there any other comments? Suggestions? Okay, so, so could I have a motion then to support the resolution that was provided by Statistics Canada?
Make a motion to that effect.
Okay, thank you, councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second around that?
Second that motion.
All right, is there any further discussion?
Question.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so moving on, and it brings us to the next item on the agenda is that it is Lyme Disease Awareness Month in the month of May. So the county was contacted by Donna Lugar, who, as I understand it, is Nova Scotia's representative at the nonprofit Canadian Lyme Disease Foundation. Ms. Lugar reminded us that May is Lyme Disease Awareness Month, and she's shared a draft proclamation, which has been also shared with councillors for review. According to the 2019 Annual Notifiable Disease Surveillance Report for Nova Scotia, there were 830 cases of confirmed and probable Lyme disease reported in 2018, which was an increase from 2018's number of just 484. So that increase is likely due to multiple factors, including, you know, the fact that there's an increase in the true number of cases as well as administration processes within public health to allow for more timely data entry. It's, I mean, it's hard to say, because those, you know, those Lyme disease, Lyme disease symptoms are similar to other illnesses, so misdiagnosis can occur really easily. But Ms. Lugar suggested this proclamation to ensure that awareness continues to be raised among healthcare professionals and to help the public protect themselves. So the proclamation was provided, and I wanted to, before reading it, I guess I wanted to just have, open it for discussion with councillors, if you had any comments or suggestions to add to this topic. Okay, so hearing none, could I have a motion to approve the proclamation as presented?
I'll move.
Thanks, councillor Melanie Sampson. So could I have a second around that?
I'll second.
Thank you, councillor Sampson. And any further discussion? All right, thanks. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. So I'm just gonna take a minute to read the proclamation for the purposes of our records. Whereas Lyme disease is a serious illness caused by the bite of a black-legged tick infected with the bacterium aurea bugdorferi, and whereas black-legged ticks carrying a variety of diseases or illnesses can now be found in all parts of Nova Scotia. And whereas awareness, education, and practicing preventative measures such as daily tick checks and proper tick removal can help reduce your chances of contracting tick-borne diseases. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Warden Amanda Mumbercat, on behalf of the municipality of the county of Richmond, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as Lyme Disease Awareness Month. So thanks for your support on that, everyone. I should definitely have practiced the name of that bacterium before the meeting. Hopefully, I can mangle it to that. All right, so moving us on to the next item on the agenda is just the mention of Volunteer Week. And so Volunteer Week was last week, April 18th to 2018th to the 24th. And I, you know, we've had some social media posts, and I know there was some ads, an ad that went in the reporter and such, but I did wanna mention it also, because I think it's important for us to recognize our volunteers. And each month, the county recognizes a local volunteer to thank them for their service. This year, I wanted to mention who they were. Those volunteers were Paul Upton, Colleen Morgan, Elaine Boudreaux, Amanda Martel, Shirley McNamara, Blair Gwynn, Peggy Willett, Rose Sampson, Elizabeth McNamara, Georgie Landry, Vernon Burke, and Aura Aronson. These influential people give countless hours towards their local communities in helping people of all ages. And from the group, Rose Sampson was named our volunteer of the year, noting that her legacy inspires everyone to contribute time to volunteer. So I just wanted to say how lucky we are to live in a place where pitching inspires culture. Thank you to them and to all the volunteers in our council, in our county. And I don't know if councillors had any, anything they would like to add to that recognition?
Just, yeah, very well said, Warden Mumbercat, and, you know, thank you to all those volunteers. It's obvious that volunteers are the heart and soul of any community. I mean, just, just recently, this weekend, we seen volunteers doing community cleanups, right? So that's great, and I just wanna congratulate all the volunteers, say thank you on behalf of council. And we're blessed to have them in our community.
Absolutely.
I agree. I'd like, if I could, just to echo councillor Sampson's sentiments towards volunteers. They're, they're in every part of our county, doing every kind of work and doing it all really with such an open heart and a real sense of selflessness. And I think when we had a little bit of a scare at the civic center and everybody thought people were gonna have to self-isolate, we saw right away, people just jumping to help and get people what they need. And, and I think that that speaks volumes of just the kind of people that Richmond County has in their county, and I'm very thankful for the ones certainly in my district and in the county as a whole.
Yeah, we have, just to, just to, I guess, reflect on the two, we have two that, you know, unfortunately passed that were great volunteers in, in our area here on the island, you know, one being Barry Marshawn and the other being Gail McKay. And, you know, I would just like to, for me personally, send a shout out to the family and my condolences to both. And, you know, both great volunteers in the community and great volunteers across Richmond County.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Any other comments on that? Thank you, councillors and deputy warden. All right, so hearing none, I'll move us along to the next item on our agenda, which is tax rule maintenance. So this item landed on our agenda because during budget deliberations, it was brought to our attention that there are properties on the tax roll that do not have assessment account numbers assigned. Property taxes are our primary source of revenue, so after looking at a sampling of those, it looked like there may be some, you know, additional resources or additional work for staff to complete in terms of updating the role. And so I wanted to bring this forward to council this evening. It's an opportunity for council to discuss and/or, you know, maybe it is just as simple as instructing staff to look into strategy for us to have the tax rule updated and then maintained ongoing in a more proactive manner. So any questions or thoughts on that from councillors? Okay.
Sorry, no, I was just, yeah, so I just have, I have, I guess, I have a couple. One of them is, I guess, one of the questions I may have, and maybe our CAO can answer this, is I think, why did it take so long for, I guess, the realization of so many pieces of property not being taxed over the, over the course of many, many years? And I guess, maybe number two, and I'll throw it out there, is it, is this something that maybe we need a meeting with PVSC to, I guess, bring together to make sure that, you know, everybody, everybody is on the same playing field and.
Dawn, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything to Mike's question, to deputy warden's question?
Yeah, I think, I think regarding your first question, obviously, there's a, there's a, there's a requirement there to have somebody do that work. And restrictions with respect to the number of staff involved in the current duties. There just wasn't enough time to really delve into it and take a good look at it. And if, and if there is a desire, then, you know, we can make a plan going forward. That's fine. As far as PVSC, I think this is, this is an issue that a lot of the rural municipalities already have, so. a lot of the rural municipalities already have. So I think P V S E is aware of the problem. Yeah, it is their responsibility to to assess accounts and match them to P I Ds properly. It's basically, I think, I think whether we're looking at, there's two, two groups or two organizations. Land registration and and P V S E, and they try to work together. All rural municipalities have this issue, have this problem. Some are, some have already dealt with it, some have already made strides in it. It is a long-term process, and it is, it is something that would take several years to complete. And even at that, would you really be, would it really be complete? It would be ongoing maintenance, I guess, would be, would be required. So yeah, if if council wants to go forward and and make that a priority, then they can. And, you know, staff will assess what needs to be done and report back to council as to what our next steps might be, and we'll go from there.
Okay, yeah, because I personally feel that, you know, we've missed the boat on hundreds of thousands of dollars in the past, in the past twenty, thirty years. And, you know, I guess those who managed to fall under the radar of not paying taxes on their property got a freebie. I also think we have to, or at P V S E, do some of the, you know, reevaluations. Some people are paying excess on the property that it's a bare piece of land, and others are paying, you know, what a bare piece of land should pay, and they have, you know, hundred and two hundred thousand dollar home. So it's it's something that I think that, you know, for our county, to be fair to all the all the members of our community, it's only fair that everybody's on an equal playing field. So I, I would like, I guess, to make a motion to have our our C O, I guess, maybe inform staff, or I don't know if we do it as a motion, or maybe just have our C O, I guess, reach out to staff to
Yeah, I think, I think that's, you're in the right direction there, Deputy Warden. I apologize for cutting you off. I think at this point, we probably, you know, could make a motion to have staff develop a strategy to go forward, to look at this more aggressively with with that, to look at both the assessment accounts and maybe the assessments a little more aggressively, like to develop a plan to do that. Would that make sense, Deputy Warden?
It does. In saying that, I think we also have to look, I mean, if we're doing, doing it for one, we might as well clean up the whole system. And part of it, part of it that I get back from some of my constituents were the the fire taxes or the fire levy that's being charged. Some are being charged on one piece of the property, and the property rate next door doesn't have any, the property rate after has some. Some are being charged where, I guess, it's on an island where fire services can't even get to. So I'm not sure, you know, if that's something that we as a council have to look at, or if that's something that can be handled through our C O and staff. But I just, I feel that it's important that we put everybody on the same playing field and tax accordingly.
Okay.
I think that, you know, during budget deliberations, I think that are sort of like unofficial decisions and how it ended up back here was that we just, we felt like, as you've mentioned, Warden Mumbercat, that we needed a strategy, and I think that that strategy will be built a bit on, you know, the C O has mentioned that other municipalities have done some of this work already. And so no need to kind of recreate the wheel. And I think that was our hope when we had that conversation, that they would, you know, reach out to other municipalities to say, who's done this recently? What has that looked like? What kind of time commitment is it? What's the cost of that? And then what's the, what's the end result, right? So, you know, Deputy Warden Digden has indicated that he thinks it's maybe like a lot of money that we're missing in tax revenue. That could be the case, or it could not be the case, right? Like, so we don't, you don't know what you don't know. So I think we would, we should tread cautiously in terms of, you know, the money that we spend in order to do that work, right? So I want it to be fair to everyone, of course, but I'd like to get a feel for what other municipalities have done, what have the results looked like? And what did it cost them to get to that point?
I would have to agree with councillor Melanie Sampson. I think we had already kind of discussed this in budget deliberation, so I wasn't sure why we were doing it again here, but I thought staff was going to possibly look into getting back to us with some, some general information to give us a bit more of an idea before we possibly jump the gun on anything.
Yeah, and I, I don't believe that we were dumping the gun. I think it was just brought to the attention so that the the viewers and the listeners knew what, as council, what we were working on or working towards. I think, I think, you know, as everyone's seen, I presented, or, you know, our C O and staff recently took ten parcels of land out of a hundred that I had, and when they were checked, there was at least out of eight out of the ten that did require new, new P I D numbers, and that would be reassessed tax number. So to me, that's, that's revenue that has been lost for many, many years. And again, I know it's it's cost forward, and it's something that we have to decide, is it costing us more than we're making? But at the same time, we also have to say, is the guy who owns parcel, A, any different, the guy who owns parcel, B? And
Yeah.
It's going to be fair across the board.
Yeah, and to your point as well, councillor Brent Sampson, we brought it forward to this agenda because we needed to bring it to a council agenda in order to provide staff with the the ability to go and do that research in the form of a motion. So that's why we brought it back here. So, so would perhaps the motion be to, as I mentioned, to do an assessment and come up with a strategy to update and maintain the tax rule? And instructing staff to do so. And I would add instructing staff to do so following budget deliberations, because I think we need to maintain the priority on our current budget process.
Yeah, I agree. Maybe to see, maybe our C O can, and I honestly don't know the system, but is the fire tax levy, it's probably going to have to be under two different systems, I guess. One is to initially find out who's being, I guess, not represented by paying taxes on the piece of property. And then the other is who's paying fire levy on property that should not have fire levy? Or who's not paying for our levy on property that should have fire levy? So it's probably going to be a two-part system, I would, I would think. Because I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, is P V S E, they have no relation to our fire levy, right?
No, they do not.
Okay, so it's going to have to be a two-part system, I guess.
So I think what we could do, though, Deputy Warden, is we could leave it broad enough that it doesn't sort of box us into a corner. And I think if we just, if we use the language for staff to instruct them to conduct an assessment and a bit of a strategy to update the tax rule in terms of all taxation following budget deliberations, maybe that would catch everything. Would, would that work?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Could I, could I just add to that, that we would just say something about considering the best practices of other municipalities?
For sure. Yeah. Yeah, definitely. So is there, councillors like to make a motion related to that item, Ben?
So, yeah, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to have our, I guess, C O instruct staff to, I guess, move forward in I guess, I know, obtaining information, I guess, or proceeding with the with the tax assessment, I guess, is that the best way to put it?
The tax rule.
The tax rule.
Yeah.
And I guess the fire levy in the same broad spectrum.
Okay. So, so I'm sorry, Deputy Warden, I just want to make sure I have this correct. So the motion is to ask, is to instruct staff to do an assessment. I can't remember the exact language you used there, and I apologize for that, but was to do an assessment, to do a bit of an investigation into, you know, the benefits of, you know, the potential benefit of a tax rule maintenance, and then also to come up with a strategy to keep it up to date. Is that, am I getting?
Yeah, correct, and including the fire.
Including the fire tax levy.
Including the fire sex levy.
Using the best practices of other municipalities. Okay. So I think we have the intent then, and there is a motion on the table. And could I have a second on that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you councillor Sean Sampson. So any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the raising and lowering of flags on municipal-owned property. And this really came up because in the last couple of weeks, there have been several tragedies that were widely recognized across the province that resulted in flags being lowered. And this really highlighted for us Richmond County's lack of a policy to ensure that we have consistent practices in terms of when flags should be lowered, either out of respect or due to a death, or if they should be raised in celebration. And so I know that there are other municipalities with flag raising and lowering policies, or at least flag raising policies. And so I wanted to kind of bring this up for discussion with council, potentially referring it to policy and bylaw to look at what other municipalities are doing to see if we could adopt any best practices. But I'd like to open up for discussion with council to see what your thoughts are on that.
I'm guessing staff was taking care of this for a long time before we got here, and probably for long after we got here. I don't know that we want to get into the business of micromanaging things too much. And in this case, I guess, things had been set up, we just weren't necessarily aware of it. So I'm not sure if it's necessary, but it's not necessarily a bad thing either. But I don't know if we're kind of just jumping in before we had all the details on that.
Any, any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Sampson. I had some residents in my, in my district bring, bring that to the, to the attention, to my attention that, that of Prince Philip, and then, of course, the anniversary of the Nova Scotia mass shooting. So like councillor Brent Sampson said, there wasn't there. And, you know, I want to thank staff for their actions on Sunday morning, bright and early Sunday morning, the anniversary of Nova Scotia mass shooting. So I think it was just a miscommunication, or we were just not aware that staff was going to be doing this. But having said that, you know, maybe we can you know, put a policy in place to make sure that when it comes, you know, what occasions do we do it, what occasions don't we do it? You know, so if you want to do it for some, you gotta do it for everyone, right? So just can pinpoint some people and some of, some events, right? So to me, yeah, maybe a policy, a policy discussion might be, might be in order.
Okay, and I would remind, you know, I would also remind councillors that it is also about raising flags. And, you know, there are many times throughout the year, you know, when it's, you know, municipalities across the province show their support for different causes or groups by doing a flag raising. And I think to your point councillor Sean Sampson, we know we need to be consistent about that and how, how we do, how we apply that in order to be fair to everybody. Councillor Melanie Sampson, did I, sorry, did I hear you with a question?
Yeah, no, maybe just a comment, like I, you know, I think it came up because of flag lowering, but I, I really appreciate your comments regarding flag raising. And I guess what I would say is, really, for that reason, I would love to see this come to bylaw and policy, and I'd like to see perhaps what we need to do is prior to it going there is to have a little bit of research in terms of what other municipal units are doing. Again, not that we need to do what they're doing, but sometimes it's the little things that you don't even think of that you might forget as you're preparing those types of policies. But I do enjoy the idea of, of, you know, perhaps having like another flag pole that we could use for special events, for lack of a better word.
Okay. Any other comments from councillors?
And the only one I have is that, I guess, to reiterate, councillor Brent Sampson's comment was, yeah, you know, I believe staff is definitely in the best position to know, I guess, when to put it up and when not to. You know, guidance, I guess, or rules, they can only, they can only follow what we implement. So you know, I guess I apologize to everybody for not realizing that last week, we should have probably had the the flags lowered, and we can't blame staff or anybody else for that. So we take the onus on us. But in, in moving forward, maybe we can, you know, with the C O's recommendation, we can follow, maybe, you know, as for lowering, maybe federal policies or federal guidelines, because as a rule of thumb, if, you know, all your post offices and whatever have it lowered, then usually there's a reason, whether it be right across the country for the lowering of the flag. So maybe that's something we can look into. You know, the federal policies, when they lower it, and as for the raising, well, then, you know, we also may be able to add that as well.
So it sounds like then councillors would be okay with us referring this to bylaw and policy to do that research?
I think, I don't know if Don could speak to this, but generally, is it not, it's not the province, is it, that sometimes instructs as to when to do it?
Well, it's not necessarily the province that determines what we do. I mean, a flag, a raising and lowering flag policy would, would probably clarify things, which I think is, is, is a good thing. And I mean, there's lots of discussion that we can have during that bylaw policy meeting. That would include the province, the feds, and whatever else we decide on. We do have five flag poles, so we have lots of them. So, yeah, I would, I would definitely say that discussion at bylaw policy would probably be the way to go.
Okay. So I don't know if we need a motion to that effect to refer to bylaw policy, Don?
You can make one if you like.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, yeah, so if council is willing, we could have a motion to refer this item to bylaw and policy?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to refer the raising and lowering of the flags on municipal-owned property to our bylaw policy.
Okay, thank you Deputy Warden. Could I have a second on that? All right, thank you councillor Sean Sampson. And so any further discussion?
Question?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is action item review. And so it's long been a practice, you know, at each council and committee of the whole meeting, your staff is diligent in providing us with a list of action items related to the previous meeting. But they aren't really listed on our agenda as an option for discussion. And nor are they revisited at the following meetings to provide a status update. So we don't really ever see, like, okay, that task complete, unless it happens to be complete within that, that single timeframe. So I guess what I was wanting to, to, I guess, have a discussion on with council this evening was, you know, potentially adding them to the agenda for review, you know, so past items can be updated to indicate their completion or status. And maybe suggesting that, you know, I've, I've looked at some different formats, but maybe working that through with staff where past items could be brought forward with an update for council's review. Kind of compare it a little bit to the sort of check review, only of course, there would be, you know, well, very similar to the check review of checks, because it's really not a, nothing on there would be actionable. There are already motions that have been passed, right? But it's just more or less to provide us with an update on where things stand. And I'd like to kind of hear councillors' comments on that or thoughts.
Yeah, I think, Warden Mumbercat, I think that's a great idea. I mean, you know, when you're four or five meetings into making a decision, and there's a couple of months that have passed, I think it's a great idea to to revisit and update the residents of our county on where already these, these action items are at. So I think, I think that's a great, that's a great motion on your part.
Okay.
I would agree, just adding another column to the already prepared action items chart that just says, you know, completed or, or in progress. And then if they're completed, the next time we come through, they just disappear off the list. And then we add the next meeting's item.
Right.
I don't, I don't know if they have to be a real big discussion item on the meeting, only because we tend to have as it is, but I mean, just looking to have, I guess, a progress update on them, it's probably okay. Just, we tend to have some pretty full agendas lately, so.
You know, and I agree councillor Brent Sampson, I agree. I don't think it would be to have a discussion on all those items, but just more or less an update for the residents to see where, where those, those items are at, right?
Yeah, I would agree. I guess that's why I would compare it to a review of the list of checks. We have an opportunity to ask a question there. We have one, but we don't spend much time discussing ones. And we don't do an approval either, so. Okay, so
Great suggestion.
All right, well, thanks, guys. Then if that's the case, could I have a motion to add action items as an agenda item to each of our both committee of the whole and regular council meetings?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you councillor Sean Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so any further discussion?
Should we also include in the motion that we add a column to indicate the Should we also include in the motion that we add a column to indicate the progress?
I think we could just decide on the format, maybe with staff, something that we all kind of can agree on. I can't visualize in my mind right now, I haven't opened what I, my draft in a while, but if that's okay, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking they're already there, so other than the column, like what Counselor Melanie Sampson was talking about, what are we meaning by adding it to the agenda? Like, where do we get the copy?
Adding an item to the agenda that says action items, or action item review, like we do check review, essentially. That's, that's what I meant.
Like currently, we don't know what the status is. So for example, you know, if it says that we're going to write a letter of support for the Arishat Community Development Commission, you know, we see that Warden Membertet does that because she CCs us on the message. But if she forgot to do it, to CC us or forgot to send the letter, that would show in the review. Right, if there was another column or something like that, in some other format, that just basically said completed.
Yeah, so you're right, Counselor Sampson, I see what you're getting at there. So to add action item review to the agenda and to reformat the action item list to show progress.
Right.
Right.
So just to clarify something, I just wanted to make this comment that action items were always an internal administrative function. They were never provided to council in the past. And it was just upon the new council coming in, out of courtesy, we gave the action items to the warden to view. Action items were never, ever given to council and never, ever put on an agenda to be reviewed at that level. These are just items that are given by the clerk to provide, I guess, duties to the staff when asked. And they are always done prior to the next meeting. Obviously, committee to whole meetings, you know, and council meetings as well, if there's deadlines given, those duties are always fulfilled. So it would just be a list of action items, and I can almost assure you that they would all be completed.
So I think, if I can interject this for one minute, I think the only issue would be to, you know, even as well as myself, just going through my notes, I know I made it a point to mention that there was an item talked about five or six months ago, and I won't go into detail about a cleanup. And the action item was supposed to be revisited in April. So I'm sure the beginning of, excuse me, I'm sure the beginning of May, we will probably revisit, but I haven't seen it come through as, and again, I think this is where the Madam Warden is indicating where we need to know that these action items have been covered or been taken place.
And that's, I understand, I understand what you're saying, Deputy. However, that deadline was the 28th of April, and that will be on the committee to hold report or the committee to hold agenda for May.
So, so I understand your perspective, Don. You know, I think though, you know, my thought process in bringing this forward was so that when we have those lengthy spans of time as a council, we're always coming in with the latest information, right? So that we can see, so if there was an order on a property from three, four, or five months back, we know, we can see quite clearly that it is scheduled for the May meeting and not the April meeting. So then we're, we're just always informed, we're always on top of it, we're always in the loop. And so to me, that would be a really helpful tool. I think it is a best practice from any meeting that you would kind of have that. And, you know, and the reality is, is that the, you know, the duty is assigned, yeah, absolutely. They are going to get done by staff. But this is just to keep us sort of in the loop on the timeline, because there's a lot of information coming at us. And sometimes frankly, you know, if there was, if myself or another councillor had a duty mixed in there, I think it would be helpful for us to have that as well. So it's really just a matter to us, you know, it's just a checks and balances thing for, you know, to keep us all informed. That's what I had in mind.
And that's, and that's fine, council, if council still wishes to do that, they have the authority to do that. Perhaps it might be a good idea to find out what other best practices are with other municipal units as well. Maybe they do it, and maybe we could follow some guidelines with respect to what others do.
Sure, we can consider that, yeah. I think anytime we're looking at something new, we're always going to want to look at, see what others are doing. I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Yeah, I agree, even if it's, even as much as, you know, us contacting the directors who contacts Nova Scotia Power, you know, the feedback, I guess, isn't there, or, and I shouldn't, I apologize. Maybe the feedback is there, I haven't received any on some of the requests that I had to put forth so far. And maybe the task was completed, but it would be nice to just get the action item more or less checked off to know it was completed.
If it comes through council.
Correct.
Yes, yeah. Okay, so I think we had sort of part of a motion on the table, which was to add action item review to the agenda. I think maybe it wasn't complete, and I just procedurally, I don't know if we need to, can we just amend that motion as, on the fly, to include a status update on the, on the action items that are presented? Are we able to just to do that?
I think we can amend, we should be able to amend the motion in the sense that we can add to look into other, other counties or other.
Well, it was, yeah, I think, you know, like I said, anytime we're going to do that kind of investigation, we definitely want to look at other best practices. But right now, the motion was to add action item review to the agendas going forward. Maybe the, maybe the motion could be amended to add action items to the agendas going forward and adjust the action item list to show a status update. In whichever format, based on the results, right, based on the research.
Yeah, I move for that.
Okay, thanks Deputy Warden, could I have a second there on that? Thank you Counselor Sean Sampson. So any further discussion, does that have captured?
Well, if the decision to move it, I just want to be clear on the motion. Is the motion to review best, review other practices related to that, or to do it and review, and then maybe change our mind later? Like, what's the, what is the exact motion, sorry?
The motion I made was to do it and review with others later.
Okay, so do it now, and then basically reserve the right to change it if we see that it's not done that way, and we, okay.
I think maybe simply reviewing it first might be a better idea, just rather than kind of jumping the gun on this. I'm not sure if this is a polite way of sort of second guessing staff. But I mean, it was, again, it was done long before we were here, and it will probably be done more after.
No, it's definitely not about second guessing staff, Counselor Sampson. In my mind, anyway, I'm more concerned with making sure that if I have a to-do item on the list, that I get it done.
Oh my God, yeah.
Right, or like if something's gone on for many, many months, that I'm not going, okay, staff, where is that? And I know, knowing it's going to be up on next month's agenda, right? Like, yeah, I mean, it's just an efficiency piece, yeah.
I agree, it's definitely, and I mean, I hope, I hope it doesn't put extra, or much extra added work to staff, because again, I know they're, they do work diligently. And again, I have to thank, I have to thank Yvonne, because I'm sure she updates me with my email every second, every second day, just so it's back at the top. So, yeah, it's, again, I think it's, I think it's just, it's a small, it's a small item, but it's a huge, it's a huge, I guess, help for definitely myself.
Keep it simple principle, I won't include the last S in there, right?
There is a motion on the table, correct?
Yep.
So any further discussion?
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thanks everyone. All right, so the next item on the list, sorry, I just need to catch my, catch back up. Next item on the list is related to correspondence. So we have correspondence from several organizations. And the first one is the Friends of St. John's Arishat Society regarding a funding request. If you just give me a moment, I'll bring that up. Okay, so the Friends of St. John has sent a letter to Warden and council describing, you know, the background of how they have purchased the old St. John's Anglican Church building in Arishat in order to preserve its significance as a historical structure for the people of Almedam. It is registered as a municipal heritage property and has been renamed the St. John's Centre for the Arts. So their goal is to keep it as an open living space, to keep it open as a living space, available for others to use and for them to host affordable, fine and performing arts events and for and by the local community and visitors. So obviously, they were, you know, impacted by COVID-19. They have received a community accessibility grant from the government of Nova Scotia. And so they've been able to install a fully accessible restroom. So kudos to them for pursuing that. But then, of course, COVID forced them to suspend all events and activities for the public, which has been quite a blow. They have depended on donations, and they had sufficient funds to cover a little over a year in operating expenses, but they are reaching the end of that, of that capacity. Because they have no paid staff, also, they weren't eligible for many of the operating expenses from the federal or provincial government grant streams that dealt with COVID. And, and so they were, you know, they were finding, I guess, this is a very uncertain financial climate for them. So they have two applications before Nova Scotia's Ministry of Communities, Culture and Heritage, for a total of $43,000 to replace their old and deteriorating roof. And if those applications are successful, you know, it will give them some stability to make sure that people can use the facility for many years to come. And they are looking at this point for a request to support operating expenses to ensure that they can stay above water for long enough for that to happen. And I apologize, I thought I had seen an amount in here, but I'm not noticing it.
Fifteen hundred.
$1,500, thank you. So, so I guess I just open that for discussion from council. Normally, we would refer this type of request to budget. If you're okay with doing so, we can do that, or if you have any comments to provide here.
Yeah, for me, Ward Membertet, I just want to say thank you to this entire group for all the hard work they've done maintaining and keeping that building open. They've mentioned some of their events, and they've mentioned the Christmas concert. My family's attended some of those concerts, and to everyone that's attended those concerts, those are great events for our community, great events for our musicians and the local talent in this area. So I want to applaud these people for the work they're doing. And for sure, I'd like to put a motion forward that we, we look at the situation and this funding request during budget deliberations, and see if there's, there's some funding there, you know, from the, say, a restart COVID funding programs, and see if we can help them out and get them this $1,500 they're looking for.
Okay. Okay, thank you Counselor Sampson, yes, and I'd echo that. They've done, they've done some really hard work, and it has so much potential. So we have a motion on the floor to refer this to budget for deliberations.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay, thanks Deputy Warden, so any further discussion on this?
Question?
So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is also a funding request from Raising the Villages. So Raising the Villages is an ongoing, is I guess, an initiative that has been ongoing for some time. They have formed as a nonprofit cooperative and are focused on early, like early years child development, that type of work. They did, they've held consultations across the island, and in the community conversations, they, you know, they confirm that what they already felt to be true, that it was the right time to make the transition from a largely municipally funded initiative to a nonprofit in their own right. So happy to see that they're taking those steps. They plan to continue expanding their community partners in Richmond County by contacting childcare providers in Budla Dack, as well as the Richmond County Early Childhood Education Association and La Sagre de la Picas. So their board of nine is in place. And it's, they are planning on holding a retreat in May. It was to be in person, but of course, COVID has affected those plans significantly. And they, they will be, I think, presenting to Richmond County Council in the near future, but preempting their presentation and recognizing that we are in budget deliberations now. They wrote to request an amount of $5,000 from the county to support the launch of their nonprofit cooperative to further their goals of creating welcoming, inclusive community spaces that reduce childhood poverty, improve mental health, and support the early years as the most vital period of investment. So, again, I guess I would suggest that this would normally be pushed to budget deliberations as another, as another grant request. Any discussion from council on that?
No, I would, I would agree with you that it's, I would be happy to make the motion to further funding and rest for Raising the Villages to be, push the budget deliberations and.
Okay. So is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you Counselor Brent Sampson.
Question?
Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, okay. That's great, thanks everyone. Next on our agenda is the Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition have provided us with a letter last week regarding support on an advocacy initiative. The coalition is extremely concerned about the limited access to affordable and appropriate housing for the residents of Richmond County and the straight area. It was recently brought to the coalition's attention that there were several units in Richmond County that, for various reasons, appeared to have remained empty for extended periods of time, and others that were in need of upgrades, that weren't, they didn't want getting those upgrades, haven't, or that took a very long time to get those upgrades. And so what we end up with is empty public housing in a community, in a county, where there's not, you know, we can't really afford to have empty public housing. So to ensure that we're maximizing the affordable housing available to the residents of the county, learning that units at times are sitting empty for months and months at a time is concerning, they write. And they are hoping that in our role as a municipal council, we might consider regular communication with the Cape Breton Housing Authority to make inquiries about the units in our prospective catchment areas to determine vacancies, reasons for vacancies, and to get assurance that these will be filled as soon as possible. If there are no seniors on the waiting list, and they did want to mention in the letter, they mentioned perhaps other adults can be considered who are in desperate need of housing, even on a short-term basis. So that was one of the options that they put forth as well, so. Any discussion from councillors or about taking that kind of action to communicate with the Cape Breton Island Housing Authority?
Yeah, for me, Ward Membertet, I've had some numerous residents call me from the complex that the foyer behind my district. And in some cases, I have to reaffirm and to agree that some of those, some of those rooms, some of those apartments were, were empty, as, you know, for periods of time. So that is concerning, and it should all be concerning to all of us. Having said that, when I spoke to housing, Norman's his name, Norman was very good to work with and has helped me, so I appreciate that. But having said that, yeah, we have to, we have to get people in these complexes sooner than later, for sure.
Okay.
So in my work with.
Sorry?
In my work with residents as well, I've also spoken to the housing folks with Cape Breton Island Housing. And again, they're very understanding that, you know, any of these, whether they're seniors complexes or affordable housing, that there are challenges right now for them to get these units up to date and up to the proper standard. And they also mentioned, you know, some other things, that they're bound legally. You know, if people leave the units and they leave items in the units, they have to hold them there for three months, and they can't even do any work in the units until, to give the people the opportunity to pick up their things. So there's a whole bunch of, a lot of layers of sort of governmental issues, I suspect, and regulatory issues. So I think advocacy is important. I think we need to, we need to work with the, you know, Straight Richmond Housing Matters Coalition to continue to push them, to push the people who are sort of holding up their train, right? So they have budgets to fix and renovate these units, but it's a time thing. They just, they have to finish once. They have to finish one set of units before they can move to another, and so it's really backlogging and there's. I know in my district, there's at least a couple of places as well that are vacant. Waiting, you know, they were supposed to be, when I spoke to Norman a couple of months ago, they were supposed to be ready for habitation at the end of March, they're still empty. Because they just can't get the crews in to do the work, so. It is a huge problem both for our seniors and for other members of our community who are, who are requiring affordable housing. It's there, it's open, and so whatever I think we can do as a council to help push that along. And perhaps create change at the higher levels, I fully, fully support.
Okay, so perhaps it could start with maybe a letter off to, I think, Sean Luke would be the contact. For. For this. He's the director of the Cape Breton Island Housing Authority, it might be a good way to sort of open that channel of communication if. If councillors are agreeable to that.
Yeah, I, I agree, one, just one thing I'd like to kind of throw in there as a knowledge piece, I talked to both Norman and. Doctor Greg from Cape Breton Housing and. I think part of the, part of the misconception is all the housing isn't just. Unfortunately or fortunately, I'm not sure what side you're sitting on, but it's all just not designated for senior housing. So some are designated for rent subsidies, some are designated for low income, some are designated for seniors, so. There are special housing in special places that are not just senior approved, they're actually waiting on families and. Agreed, maybe we can discuss if there's something we can do or if there's. A way we can play a role in, I guess, moving them along quicker, getting them back up and running faster or, you know. Maybe we can be within the loop of. Of who gets what and, you know, people that we know looking for them.
I think what we're discussing here though, is it not just the seniors apartments which they had listed in the letter specifically, right, that's the main area of concern. And others, you know, there are other rental units as well, but. I think that this was basically what they were getting at because they had listed them out per, per district, which, which places and how many units in each one of them.
Yes, that's right, yeah.
And I mean, when it, when it comes to the senior complexes as well, another thing that, that plays a factor is, and speaking with Norman as well. Norman's been great and every time I call him, he answers my questions as best he can. But another thing that plays a factor is that, you know, you could have someone on a waiting list that wants to be on the, the first floor. Of a unit, of a building. Where there's, there's nine applicants that want to get on the first floor and there's an empty apartment on the second floor that no one's interested in, right, so that plays a factor sometimes as well, right?
For sure, yeah. Okay. So, so maybe, I guess in terms of an action related to this item, would it make sense for. You know, maybe for me as a warden to send out a note, like an email to Sean Luke or just like I said, to open that line of communication or. You know, maybe copy all of councillors' in so that we can see that and just ask him, you know, what, what's the status now and is what, how can we help? Like to your point, I can councillor Melanie Sampson, you know, how can we support their efforts?
Right, like should we be writing to the minister and deputy minister or something, that's all I'm thinking.
All right, I don't know if we need a motion for that, but.
No, I think you can reach out on your own, just to. Kind of a formal informal invite for some information.
Okay. All right, I can certainly do that. Okay, so just, I'll move us along, if there are any, no other comments on that item on the agenda? Okay.
So were they looking, sorry, were they looking for financial support as well or were they looking for support just to? It was just support just to try and get them into the buildings quicker, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to bring attention, bring attention to the situation.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't need to refer this to one to budget, Deputy Warden. Hooray. We like those kinds, it's great. Okay, so that's great, thank you guys, so I'll move us along to the items added to our agenda and I think the first item added. Was from councillor Sean Sampson, you had some congratulatory or well, like maybe. Good luck or well wishes you wanted to extend?
Yeah, so yeah, as we all know, Warden and fellow councillors and staff, as we all know, Friday the thirty, it is, is a setting day for all our lobster fishermen locally. So again, I just want to wish, wish them all well, all these. Fishermen, these crew members, these boat owners, you know. Wish them well, wish them a prosperous season and wish them all good luck and then lots of catches. I mean, I joke with some of them and then I tell them that, you know, when it comes to what they do for a living, you know. I get, I get sick on a circus ride, you know what I mean, so let alone get on a fishing boat, right, so. I joke about that, so hats off to all these guys and my heart goes out to them and, and just wishing them well and wishing them a good season.
Okay, well said councillor Sean Sampson, for sure, wishing everyone a safe. A safe and prosperous season, for sure. Would anyone else like to chime in on that? Okay. So thank you councillor Sean Sampson, the next item then on the agenda was an addition that I had made and it was really just. Just an awareness piece, I wanted to let everyone know that the Straight Area Chamber of Commerce has their nominations opened and. I think there's something like twenty-five or thirty percent of the chamber membership that, that is in Richmond County. So when these things, when these opportunities come up to recognize businesses and individuals, you know, for their success and. I always think it's important for us to be part of that, so they do have award nominations open right now, they have cultural award of merit. For a business or employee who has enhanced awareness within the community of culture, visual and performing arts or literary, literary, literary arts, excuse me. The, there's also open a Kevin Beaton Heart of the Community Award, which is for an individual who made, who's made an outstanding contribution to. You know, the growth of community opportunities. And then there's their highest award, which is the Jack Hardley Lifetime Memorial Achievement and Business Award. That award recognizes individuals with a long record of continuous business operations in the straight area, a minimum of twenty years. They're the business leaders who have demonstrated a history of success and have a reputation of being good employers and community champions. And I wanted to mention that, you know, previous winners in our county have included. Folks like Don Stone from St Peters and Herman and Norman Boudreaux, Vereshad, so. There, you know, with those nominations open right now, I guess I would just suggest Richmond County is filled with amazing entrepreneurs and volunteers and I'd. Encourage councillors and community to nominate a deserving, a deserving business or person for those types of awards because. There's just nothing quite like being recognized by your peers, it's a great opportunity. Any questions on that? Thanks, everyone. The next item on the agenda was a congratulatory message for Richmond Cheer Athletics. Huge congratulations, we wanted to send out to them because a little over a week ago. They won really big at the For the Love of Cheer All-Star Cheerleading Competition. It was a live virtual competition and every team that they entered into that competition won first place. Plus three out of the four teams had the highest scores out of any other team competing in their level, not just their division. And they also won as grand champs, which means they also had the highest scoring team in the entire competition, so those results are pretty amazing. They're the result of hard work by the twenty-seven Richmond County. Richmond Cheer Athletics and their coaches and their supporters, so I just wanted to do a shout out to them because it was quite an accomplishment. Congratulations to them. Any additional comments on that?
I, I would just like to say that, yeah, those results, like you said, Ward Merkin, those are, are great results and a great accomplishment, so congratulations to all of them for sure.
For sure. All right. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is related to COVID testing sites in Richmond County. So I'm sure you all have as well, but certainly I've been hearing from residents that they're concerned about the lack of. Both symptomatic but more particularly asymptomatic testing facilities in Richmond County, so we do have appointments that people can book at the Straight Richmond, they seem to be booking up really, really quickly. There's also been a pop-up rapid testing center in St Peters at least twice in the last number of months. There have been concerns expressed about how well advertised those are. And in reviewing the Nova Scotia Health website just before this meeting, there weren't any public health mobile units, those rapid testing sites advertised past April twenty-seventh, which is tomorrow, and not for Richmond. So the, you know, I guess the dilemma is with numbers on the rise and now with Dr Strang asking people not to travel out of their community for testing. Many people are at a loss as to how they can be tested, especially if they've had to leave the community for valid reasons. Such as medical, legal or educational reasons. Even without the travel restriction, you know, in place, having that, having to drive to Sydney, Indiania, Shorba Deck. Was a significant barrier for many seniors and for people without access to transportation and, I guess I'm wondering if council might. Might consider a letter or, or have some thoughts that they want to express related to the lack of testing facilities in Richmond County, so I'll just open that for discussion.
I would certainly support you writing a letter on behalf of, of council and the residents of Richmond County requesting. The, you know, pop-up clinics, you know, return to Richmond County. And also, you know, that we get enough notice, you know, first of all, that they're listed on those Nova Scotia Health websites. But even if we got noticed and we could advertise it through the Richmond County social media channels, yeah, which we've, which we've done when, when they've come.
Yeah.
But, but some people don't, do, don't go to social media sites for information like that, they go to the Nova Scotia Health and, and I know myself, that's what I do. So I'll go to the Nova Scotia Health site, you know, where are the pop-up clinics that are close by? And then all of a sudden you drive to Port Hawkesbury and oh, there it is, but you didn't see it on the website, so. Certainly I would support you writing a letter on behalf of council. Requesting that.
Okay. Any other comments or thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, I agree, I think councillor Melanie said it best, you know, the only thing I think I would add if anything was, you know. How proud of I, I am of the people of the county of Richmond for, you know, how we actually do. Isolate, how we do, you know, keep our distance and we are diligent and, and making sure that we do our part. Again, it would be very nice to have some more rapid testing or testing so that we can maintain our, you know, very, very, very low numbers.
Yeah. For sure. Thank you Deputy Warden and councillor Melanie Sampson, so any other comments on that? So again, I don't, I don't know that we. Maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe in this instance, maybe we should have a motion to write that letter, Dawn, I'll look to you for some advice on that.
Yeah, I think, I think a motion would be, would be good.
Yeah, I think in this case because it'll be a more formal letter to Nova Scotia Health. So could I maybe have a motion to write a letter to Nova Scotia Health regarding COVID testing sites in Richmond County?
Will that?
Okay, thank you, so any further discussion?
Question.
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. All right, thanks everyone. Okay, so the last item added on our agenda is the closing, I guess, or opening of municipal buildings to the public and this is something that. The CIO brought to my attention earlier today is something we may need to consider. Or at least maybe it would be time to discuss, so similar to how we had to sort of pivot here and. You know, for the sake of everyone's safety, conduct an online meeting when I know we would prefer to be in person together. You know, we may need to start to consider some restrictions to public access to some of our municipal. Buildings, so Dawn, I don't know if I could ask you to provide some background on that?
So last year when, when, in the, in the, in the height of the pandemic, we did close the municipal office. To the public. We also had some interest in perhaps closing the, the, the transfer station. However, council preferred to leave that open. We, we, we do feel that since we're having meetings via Zoom, that it would, it would likely be prudent to. You know, restrict the public from coming into the, into the municipal building. There are a lot of people that come in to pay their taxes, but from last year, a lot of people did set themselves up for online banking, so we're. We trust that a lot of people will find alternate ways of paying their taxes, we do of course offer that, that service, people can call in. The staff have been very helpful to set up. Folks on. Online banking and it's worked rather well. And people continue to send in their mail, so we really don't see, at this time, a need for people to come in to pay their taxes and we, like I say, we do. We do, we don't see a lot, there, there are a few people that come in. They do have till the end of June to pay their taxes without penalty. And at that time, you know, staff is very flexible with respectable paying their bills, so. The county of Geisborough has closed their offices. The county of Inverness has closed their office. I think CBRM and the town of Port Hawkesbury are making decisions. This evening and we'll make an announcement tomorrow, so. I would presume that CBRM will close their offices as well, I'm not sure about the town. But that's, that's our, that's our recommendation for the safety of all, of all of our staff. We recommend that. That we close to the public. And, and I would, I would assume it would be probably for two weeks, maybe to a month, and then we can revisit it after that. I think the province has provided some restrictions for, for thirty days, so I think we could probably follow in that suit and then revisit it after that, as long as. Council was, would approve it.
Okay, thank you Dawn, so I know I have a couple of questions, but maybe I'll just open the floor to councillors first, do you have any questions or comments on that?
I would just say that the instructions from Public Health are certainly that employers are open and receptive to people working from home where possible. And so I do certainly see, you know, CIO Marshawn's comment is following along with what Public Health is looking for us to do, so I'm. I would be in support of that, I, I feel like, you know, he's able to manage what needs to happen on the. You know, in terms of the forward-facing pieces that we do towards the public, but. The reality is, is they probably field a fair number of questions through the phone, which I'm sure would be forwarded and emails and Zoom calls and, and so really we've. You know, they've done this before, so I feel very confident that we can continue to provide good service to the residents and, and keep people safe.
Yeah, and I, I guess maybe that's my question councillor Melanie Sampson is, so. Dawn, are you recommending that the offices, or the municipal office be closed to the public, but would staff also be working from home or? I guess that was just for clarification, I wasn't sure if you meant both.
No, that's not what I was referring to, I'm just, I'm just referring to closing for public access.
Okay.
Staff will still be coming to work, last year what we did was we, we evaluated the requirements for people to be in the office and. Alternated staff. So that, and Geisborough's done the same thing, in the event that we have infection in the staff, not all the staff is infected, so we do have somebody. Basically to come in and we evaluate that through each department and it worked well last year and some people work from home. Of course, there are, there are requirements for, for employees to continue to work regarding essential services, so we evaluate that as well.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Any other comments?
I guess the only comment I would, I would have and. I don't know, I mean, I definitely feel that we do have to follow health regulations and, and guidelines put forth and. You know, if the other counties are doing it, then we probably want to follow suit. In, in saying that, we also want to be able to provide the service necessary to the public, since that is our ultimate. You know, role. By closing, by closing the doors to the public, then I guess we have to ask, you know, do we offer them that? And I guess for the next month, it doesn't matter if, if the interest doesn't stare until after June, but we do want to make sure that for those who do pay in person. That we don't penalize them for not being able to make it into the building.
Yeah, so you're talking like in terms of interest, potential interest on their tax bills if they're not able to get there because of, you know, we interrupted the.
Correct, because there's many seniors who don't do online banking and don't do, you know, email transfers and. And they do, they do, that's, that's part of their, their operation is to go in personally and, and pay it, otherwise we wouldn't need anybody at the front desk, I guess. So, you know, in saying that, I think we have to be diligent to make sure that we, we accommodate them on one side or the other, whatever it be.
For sure. For sure, yeah, so, so I guess Dawn, you'd be based on. For sure, yeah, so, um, so I guess Dawn, you'd be, uh, based on your recommendation, you'd be looking for a motion of council to, um, close the municipal office to the public at this point?
Yeah, that's, that's essentially looking for.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to close the municipal office for, uh, what were you talking about? Period of one month, was it, to, to see or?
We could, we can do it for, uh, yeah, for two weeks. And if, uh, if other municipalities maintain the closure, then we can, uh, we can extend it to, uh, to another two weeks and then reevaluate it.
Yeah, probably two weeks is safer, just depending how things go, we don't over, yeah, okay, so.
Yeah, that's a great idea, yeah. So councillor Brent Sampson, so your motion is to close the municipal office to the public for a period of two weeks?
Two weeks and then reevaluate at that time.
Okay. All right, so could I have a second around that motion?
Yeah, we're taking that motion to close it for two weeks and reevaluate.
Okay, so any further discussion?
Question?
All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, thanks, everyone. Now, it doesn't address the, you know, I know Dawn, you mentioned the municipal landfill site as well. Or sorry, the transfer station. I still call it a landfill, sorry. But, um, I don't know if councillors wanted to discuss that at this time or did you want to sort of leave that for now? It's.
Well, I think, I think the reason why we discussed it last time was, uh, we did have an, uh, an increase in, in traffic. And, uh, of course, with the increase, increase in traffic, the staff are exposed more there. And, uh, it was during a time of heavy garbage collection, so there was a lot of traffic in there from the contractors providing, bring, uh, you know, hauling, uh, the heavy garbage collection, uh, to the, to the site itself. Sometimes people tend to, uh, frequent the, the office itself. So we just thought maybe it might be a good idea to restrict that as well. But I, I mean, we, we don't see that as being a problem right now. We're just worried about it ramping up, uh, when, when the cases are a little bit more, uh, a, a lot more, uh, obvious. And, uh, we don't want staff to get too, uh, too, uh, you know, worried about too many people at the landfill at the same time. So we could, we could just follow that as well and, and not close it, but evaluate it over the next, uh, week or so and see how it, it progresses. And if it doesn't change and, and, and there's, there's no real need to, to address it, then we can leave it the way it is. If it becomes a problem, then perhaps I will, I can, I can inform council of that.
Yeah, that sounds a good plan.
Yeah, could we maybe, um, could we maybe put some safety provisions in place? I guess, uh, Dawn, at this point that, uh, nobody enters the, uh, nobody is permitted to enter the building. You know, I, I do know that if you're overweight, you get a bill. But again, um, with, with this day and age and the, uh, you know, the safety aspect, I think, uh, I think we can get the name, plate number and the driver driving it and forward them the bill in the mail as opposed to.
Yeah, and that's what we did last year.
Okay.
I mean, I feel very confident that, that, you know, between Dawn and Director of Public Works, they can make the determination in terms of when it's not, you know, safe for, for the, for the, um, site to be open. I, I would be very comfortable with deferring the decision-making to them.
Yeah. Yep, and, and the need for contact tracing and all of that, yeah, for sure, all right. Okay, so thanks very much councillors, um, and I think that might be the end of our agenda or items added. So, um, I guess next item on our agenda is really a question period. And again, that is limited to, uh, to 10 minutes and it is restricted to, um, the remainder of the agenda following the, the committee of the whole report. So if there are any questions from the public, I don't see any in the chat.
Can you, uh, does the person have to call in? This is Robbie Fugere from Pedes de Gras.
No, you go ahead Robbie, if you have a question.
I do, and it relates to the, uh, the census that you mentioned, and I'm hoping that it's at the right place on the agenda. But it deals with the, uh, May 2021 census, which you spoke about. Am I, am I all right to ask a question about that?
Yes, absolutely, you go ahead.
You, uh, spoke about this, uh, and you mentioned the importance of people, uh, participating because of economic development opportunities. And I have to agree totally with you. But would you consider, uh, when you're inviting people to, uh, fill their questionnaire, would you consider as a council, uh, trying to remind people that there is a French version to that, uh, questionnaire? And what I'm getting at is, uh, we have a, uh, a certain Acadian population in Richmond County. Uh, as a matter of fact, uh, a quite large Acadian population. And it is very important for that, for that population to identify itself. Because it means, uh, when there are projects, when there are grants being given out, often they're given out based on, uh, percentage of, uh, the population that speaks, uh, that speaks the French language. And we do have a fair-sized population that does that. But, uh, we, uh, that population doesn't always identify itself. And I know I'm going beyond the questionnaire, I'm going too far, uh, and I don't wanna monopolize the, the 10 minutes. But I guess my point is that, would you consider, uh, inviting people to do what they can to, uh, identify themselves as French-speaking, if they do, if they are French-speaking, so that we don't lose out on, uh, possible grants and economic development opportunities? And to, if I may, and again, with your permission, I would, uh, want to underline the comments that were made by councillor Melanie Sampson from, uh, on this same topic, where she said that, uh, it, uh, it might be evident that we have, uh, a shortage of people who apply for these positions that require bilingual people. And I think that's, uh, that's too bad, because, uh, you know, uh, given our French programs, given our Acadian population, I think we should be able to fill positions that require French. And again, if we do that, we might be encouraging people to, uh, practice more, uh, read more, write more and, uh, speak more French, so that when, when opportunities like this come up, some of our local, uh, young people could benefit from those jobs. So I guess my question is, and it's a long one, would you consider, uh, would you consider, uh, putting in, uh, this plug for the Acadian population?
Absolutely, I think that's a really great point, uh, thank you Robbie. And you are absolutely right, if people do not self-identify, um, as being, you know, a French, Acadian, and then, then it's really difficult for us to build a case for support for, for important projects, whether they're economic or cultural or social, whatever the case, we want to build a case for supportive and, and for investment here. So, uh, maybe I'll ask, I don't know, councillor Sean Sampson, if you'd like to say some, you know, something on that?
Oh, for sure, I mean, that's a very important question. And I thank you Robbie for, for bringing that to our attention. I, I, again, being Acadian, being French, uh, and, and, and living in this area all of my life, I, I think it's very important to, to identify and, and make sure that, uh, the Acadian culture, uh, you know, i- is always there. And then, you know, we identify these people in our community to make sure that, uh, like you say, when it comes to, to, to funding and grants and, and, and keeping the, the culture going and, and the language going, I think it's, it's a very great question. And, and, and thank you Robbie for, for bringing it to our attention.
Absolutely. Any other councillors, would you wanna comment on that? I know personally, um, Robbie, Robbie, what I, what I'll be doing is making, you know, some social media posts. I know not everyone's on social media, but certainly, um, we'll be, uh, I'll be doing my part as much as I can anyway to, to push that message along and I'll be, I'll be sure to mention that Acadian, French, Acadian component and both, both on the, on the self-identifying and on the jobs available, if they're still available. Thanks for bringing that up. Are there any other questions from the public? Okay, so hearing that, um, I will request, um, a motion to, uh, to head in camera for discussions.
I'll make that motion to head in camera.
Everyone's muted.
I was muted.
Thank you, I think that was deputy warden did, could I have a second around that, please? Councillor Brent Sampson, thank you so much. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried, okay. So thank you to the public for attending with us this evening and, um, we're gonna head in camera. So we're back in our regular meeting. Um, so at this point, I'll just, uh, I'd like to, I guess, ask for a motion to accept the in-camera recommendation regarding the employee matter.
Okay. I'll move that, sorry, I was on you.
Thanks.
I'm not doing good at this at all right now.
No, I know, it's all right. Can I have a second around that?
Final stretch.
Right? Could I have a second around that? Okay. Sean or, or Mike or Brent? They're all muted, except for, or wait, Sean's not here, is he? Oh yeah, no, he's here.
He's there, yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it's, maybe it's a dead motion.
Yeah, maybe it is.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay, all right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Yes, Melanie.
Those. Okay, those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carried. All right, so at this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Kinda make one of those.
All right, thanks councillor Brent Sampson.
Like a tradition Brent.
Could I have a second around that? Did I hear someone's, yes, okay.
That one's not a bad motion.
God, I know, we're gonna be here all night. All right, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? All right, motion carried.